Good evening, it is seven thirty-four. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk County Council on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Sir, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Camacho.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Present.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Yugleman.
Present.
Ms. Revolus.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Mr. Caides.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Alterman.
Here.
Mr. Meek.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fifteen we have a.
Thank you. First item on the agenda would be public participation. If you haven't had an opportunity to sign up, there's a sheet down below that you can sign your name. We ask that you keep your comments for three minutes. Also reminding you that the Board of Estimate Taxation will be also holding a public hearing at which people will have an opportunity to also speak. Tonight's council business is simply setting the amount of money that the city will be allowed to spend during the next fiscal year. In other words, setting the cap on the budget. It's not setting or allocating funds to any one line item or any one department. It's just setting the overall spending cap that the city will will be allowed to allocate towards all the city expense, all the city departments, all the city services and so forth. I do want to say that this has been a very challenging budget year. I'm sure you can all appreciate that. I want to thank the council for their hard work. I want to thank the public for coming out and speaking about their concerns about the budget and what their thoughts are relative to a board of estimate or the Board of Education, other city services and so forth. As I said, this has been a very challenging year for a variety of reasons. We know that many people have not fully recovered from the pandemic yet and with eight and a half percent inflation facing us. A lot of people who might have had jobs in the past have perhaps not been able to recover, been able to keep that job or had to take lower paying jobs and so forth. So we had a challenge before us. We have to look at the Board of Education. We have to look at other city residents who are living on fixed incomes and so forth. And as I said, it's not really been easy, but I do want to thank everybody for their expressions of concern. I know that I personally and others on the council have received many emails, many letters, many telephone calls, speaking on both sides. One, speaking to keep taxes as low as possible, others to fully fund the Board of Education. So tonight, we're here to kind of vote on that cap and make a determination as to how much can be spent. Once the cap is voted on, the Board of Estimate Taxation will go through all the departments, looking at their request, and they'll be allocating line item funds. So they can increase their request for the cap. If so, then they would have to come back to the council and ask by a two-thirds vote that the council increase the cap on the budget. If the Board of Estimate Taxation comes in below the cap, then the process moves forward. There's no further action. So having said that, we can call the first speaker down to address the council.
Lisa Britton.
One thing, Mayor, before we start, I want to mention that we have live interpretation tonight. If you in Haitian Creole and Spanish. So if you'd like to listen to Haitian in Haitian Creole or Spanish, just click on the globe icon at the bottom of your screen and select Spanish or Haitian Creole to listen to Haitian Creole, you will select French.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi.
Lisa Britton, Nineteen Shorefront Park. As I've said in previous comments, I'm not advocating one way or the other for the budget cap. What I will say is this, this budget cycle has been the most embarrassing I've seen since two thousand and five. Not necessarily in terms of turnout, emails, public outrage or pleas, but with the process. And I remember some barn burners back in the days of Susan Marks in the Concert Hall. It was employee insurance and a five million dollar shortfall. Those were the good old days. This year is embarrassing because the revenue and the budget gap is so much wider and it just doesn't add up. You all boast were the fastest growing city in Connecticut. So where's the money? Why, after two decades, can we still not fund our schools or other departments without engaging in creative accounting, withdrawing from the rainy day fund, or dramatically increasing the property taxes of residents? That was, of course, a rhetorical question because I've stood here consistently over the years advocating for the policy changes that would address the disconnect that we have and have had for twenty years between our land use and our education funding. Crickets from you guys. This year's orchestrated drama of finger pointing and demonization between the council and Board of Ed only stands out because it's between twenty-four out of twenty-five members from the same party. Maybe not the mayor's party, but it is one party. If each of you were independently asked the reasons why Norwalk keeps falling short on its revenue, could you list them? Would you dare? No doubt you each ran for office with the best of intentions, but something changed. Fear or ambition took over. This administration consistently ranks low in transparency with conflicts of interest and questionable ethics by a few. Each of you bear responsibility to discuss issues publicly. Do you? Will you? Does a FOIA complaint against the political body of this group change your behavior? People at this podium are often labeled troublemakers or naysayers, but is it unreasonable for the public to expect honest questions, honest discussion, and transparent public debate on our revenue stream and our expenses? I'll say it again. Land use is about ninety percent of Norwalk's revenue and education makes up sixty percent of our expenses. Two decades later, we still struggle. Why? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Godfrey Azima.
Good evening, everyone. Godfrey Azima, fifty-four Glenwood Avenue. This evening, my fellow colleagues, I come to you for you in both roles, a father of four and P S youth, and also in my role as vice chair of the Norwalk Board of Education. Many of you sitting here who voted for me began to know me and become familiar with me while campaigning and me articulating the commitment I have to serve our public in putting our youth needs first. This practice has been one that I've been fortunate to adopt, working in Fairfield County for the last fifteen years, specifically in areas just like Norwalk. Stanford mainly for the last fifteen years while elected. What encouraged me to really go forward in this role was really being able to, one, experience how one school system treats their constituents and also live in an area that shows something drastically different. The demonstrated investments made in the school system prior to me being elected were things that gave me promise and encouragement that to secure the investment me and my family made to live here, I want to support what was going good and keep it well. I've come to know you over the time I've been elected and my relationship with many of you is I really believe you're all good people and I know those of you who are parents. I also know that the expectation you have for your youth is to not just provide your child the bare minimum, whether or not it's in your capacity. The last few months, we've had multiple discussions that nauseam between our two boards. And I thought it was important to convey the biggest concern I have in our discussion has been the unintentional messaging to our youth. What's come out more and more in discussions has been details around where the money goes and no question around our expectation for how we look to see our youth progress and become future ready. I ask of you tonight in making your final decision to be mindful that we are messaging to our youth the care we have for them and that it's not anything along the lines of they're not worth it. Because my growing concern has been that. And I think it's important to recall and be mindful of opportunities you had to ask questions, become further more informed around the decision-making process and accept that anything that was brought to you just wasn't asked. The intention the board has demonstrated to providing the information that you've requested has solely been to keep this conversation going and to also acknowledge that the challenges that we pointed out within what would partly be addressed in some of our budget requests will not go away. It regardless of whether or not we're awarded the request or not. And I ask of you to not only be mindful of how our youth are perceiving our leaders right now, I also ask that.
If you're at three minutes and thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. I also ask that you uphold what it is that we communicated to our constituents for what we would do in these roles. You all have a tough decision tonight and I really appreciate your service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Henderson.
Thank you. Good evening, Lisa Henderson, Apple Tree Lane. Thank you to the council for your service and a special thank you to Darlene for your op-ed of the budget process and how it affects taxpayers. There isn't a person that I know that doesn't support the education of the children of Norwalk. Some say that adding additional funding to the Board of Ed budget is only another hundred or two hundred dollars. That doesn't include the already proposed medium median increase of between one hundred and ninety-three and nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. I find it disingenuous to see a comparison of our wealthier towns when it suits the narrative, but when talking about test scores comparisons don't matter. Taxpayers of Norwalk, especially the elderly and those on fixed incomes, can no longer afford to fund the continued special interests of this Board of Ed and Superintendent. Renters will no longer be able to afford the already high rents that are sure to increase as taxes increase. This does not minimize the expectation that all the children of Norwalk should be well-educated. That has never been the question when it comes to the budget and funding the Board of Ed. Any talk of using the rainy day fund to support the Board of Ed is poor fiscal management. At a previous council meeting, it seemed that some members didn't have a good understanding of the rainy day fund and how it should be used, how it should or shouldn't be used. Funding annual city expenses is never an emergency reason to draw down on this fund. The rainy day fund is like an insurance policy that makes our city credit creditworthy also. Why hasn't the outstanding and increasing debt service and current percentage of it and how it will continue to grow as we continue down the same path year after year? Can thank, but thankfully, Mr. Meek addressed it at the last meeting through this process. Norwalk Public Schools must live within the four percent increase being allocated to them. Stop blaming past year's budgets is the problem, as many of you were council members at that time when you flatlined the budget during an election year, possibly afraid to raise taxes then. These council budget meetings have become nothing more than a dog and pony show where parents are encouraged to parade their children in front of the mayor and council while begging for their education and Norwalk Public School employees are encouraged to come to the podium and beg for their jobs enough already. The council must take a stand to protect taxpayers and residents from being forced out of this city and provide reasonable funding to the Board of Education, which I believe is the four percent currently allocated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Connell.
Patrick Connell, Ten Harston Place. I'd like to thank Mayor Rilling, Lisa and Tom for responding to my email. Appreciate it. Ultimately, on education, the needs are endless and the resources are limited. It's as simple as that. Twelve point eight percent on a Board of Education budget and I have two kids in the public school system here. It's just not sustainable. You can't have taxes rising faster than incomes. And really, you noted inflation's increasing, we have a heavy tax burden, we have a debt load that is going to peak hopefully next year, if I read the tables correctly. Unions are going to come back and negotiate for higher wages to offset that inflation. It's not just about this year. This year, we only, in your proposed budget, we only stay under four percent by taking money out of the funding for the other than pension benefits. And it's a technical issue, but if that's not sustainable, you can't keep going back to the well on that. So anyone who thinks that you can go twelve point eight percent on any budget in this environment, you can't grow expenses faster than your income. This is a balanced budget exercise. I want to make it really simple for everyone who's listening at home. It's not sustainable. It's not competitive relative to other towns. And the issues underneath this and how we arrive here are less important initially than come up with a way that we can keep the cost rising at a rate equal to or lower than incomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda Trimboli.
Hello, members of Common Council and Mayor Rilling. My name is Amanda Trimboli and I live on Cider Lane. I'm a voter, taxpayer, mother of two children and N P S, P T A co-president for Wolf Pit and now a substitute teacher. I know that you probably have already decided on the cap for the budget. What I want to address today is transparency. I'm new to coming to these meetings and I want to be aware of what's going on since I have kids that will be an N P S for the next twelve years. I also feel I have a duty to stay in the know about anything that affects our school system since I'm head of the P T A. What I've concluded in the past month of coming to meetings, going on Zoom, reading articles in the news and staying informed on social media is that there are a lot of opinions as well as misinformation. So that then encouraged me to reach out to some common council members asking questions as well as current B O E members and former members. I figured going straight to the sources would give me some factual information, but it just left me more confused. I sent an email to all of you in response to the budget and some of you replied, and I'm appreciative of the ones that took the time out to do that. In some of my correspondence, I learned that the B O E was actually told not to use the COVID money to hire new teachers, but they went ahead and did it anyway. But how can you blame them when they were completely flat funded in two thousand and twenty-one? Then I also heard that a common council member has been reaching out to the superintendent, B O E and CFO for their financials and didn't get any answers to their questions. I also reached out to a B O E member asking if the B O E makes their financials public so residents in Norwalk can see exactly where our tax dollars are going. This B O E member said that there is no breakdown that they know of. Then I read Dr. Estraya's response to the budget that was recently posted in Nancy on Norwalk, and she stated that she and the B O E have actually tried to have consistent meetings with all of you, but she hasn't gotten much response on that. Do you see what is happening here? All this back and forth leaves residents of Norwalk confused and not wanting to put trust in any of you. At least that's how I'm feeling. My suggestion, you all need to get it together and start communicating with each other. It's ridiculous that a panel of adults can't even do that. Full transparency is the only way that you will get your constituents and taxpayers to fully trust you. How do we even know exactly what we are fighting for if you can't do that? Now I'm going to address the B O E because I know that some of you are probably listening right now. I'm assuming you will have to make the hard decision of making budget cuts because I'm sure that the common council will not be giving you your full ask. I encourage and implore you to start making cuts from the top and not the bottom. All the people at the bottom, paraeducators, counselors, interventionists, teachers, coaches are the people that are the most valued and much needed in N P S, as well as all the unique programs that the schools hold. I know it's a lot easier said than done, but without these teachers and programs, N P S will be nothing. I've only been substitute teaching for a short time, but I've seen enough to know that all these people are extremely important for our kids. Figure out a way to make cuts without having to touch any of that. If anything, all these people deserve a raise. They are in the trenches every day and they see and experience way more with our kids than any of you will on a daily basis. They are the glue that holds everyone together. If you break that, then your system will be broken, adding years upon years of repair. At the end of the day, this is all about the kids. And that's why teachers are so special because they give all of themselves to our kids each and every day, and for that I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marlene De Bellis.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Marlene De Bellis. I live at two Gilbert Street and I have been a resident of Norwalk for twenty-six years. I respectfully ask the council for the approval of the twelve point seven percent budget increase requested by the Board of Education. This funding will protect the salaries and benefits of the talented and dedicated Norwalk Public Schools employees. It will protect the quality of special education services. It will ensure the continuity of services provided by the social workers and guidance counselors. It will protect the vital student life experiences such as band, orchestra, theater, visual arts. Sorry, middle school and high school sports and field trips while ensuring cohesive programming through department chairs. It provides for resources that directly address student needs, including aides, intervention interventionists, paraprofessionals, school counselors and teachers. I hope our council and the city will continue investing in our children and our schools. This is an investment that I see as having immeasurable returns in raising and sustaining the vitality and quality of life of our community. I am the mom of a freshman at Norwalk High School and our family is extremely pleased with and thankful for the quality of courses offered and the commitment and professionalism of the teachers and staff. From everything I've seen, the teachers and staff do an exceptional and above and beyond job. Our children and our schools deserve our full and wholehearted investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry M. Pritchett.
Larry, that's the last one signed up. There might be some more on the sheet if you can bring it up to us. If anybody else wants to sign that hasn't signed yet. There'll be more sheets down here.
Good evening, Mayor. Common Council members. My name is Sherry McCready Pritchett. I reside on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Drive, and I'm also a common council at large member.
Board of Education.
Looking at you guys, Board of Education at large member. I know you all will recall a third-party efficiency study was conducted and a robust budget book was developed to ensure comments around a lack of transparency and missing data weren't the focus of our budget discussions. In the future, perhaps the council could provide feedback on how the data is presented and formatted. And maybe next year, finance teams can align on how it would be most helpful to chart the information. I can appreciate that it's a lot of data to digest. Regarding the budget. When the district was level funded, the city was warned that it would create a fiscal cliff. But no action was taken. Last year, Central Office sent a budget that included a two-year plan to address the cliff. Again, nothing. And now, three years later, we are here. All of these things we know that would happen and we were warned about are happening. In conclusion, moving forward, my expectation is that we can focus on how to maximize the funding available to ensure that our students have the necessary tools and resources to reach their full potential. I thank all of you for your time.
Thank you.
Kara Baker.
Good evening, Common Council members. Mayor Rilling, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your tireless commitment to our city. I know how hard it is and it does not go unnoticed. My name is Kara Nelson Baker, sixty-nine Melbourne Road. Raised and educated in Greenwich, I've been a homeowner in Norwalk for the last twenty years, raising my two children here with my husband. I wish, I mean, I really, really wish that I could say that I'm proud to be a Norwalker. But the truth is, especially since elected to the Board of Education in two thousand and twenty-one, I am not. Instead, I'm even more disappointed and disheartened by the actions and missteps taken by so very many who I thought were on the same team. I've been watching admittedly from the sidelines for most of my twenty years here, while year after year, the city and the Board of Education tussle and twist, mostly in the public eye, to align on things we are all supposed to support. That of the well-being of our city citizens especially are most vulnerable. Yet over and over again, we just can't get there. As a resident of Norwalk, I've been appalled by years at the inability of our elected officials to get to some sort of compromise on a budget for Norwalk Public Schools. A district set smack in the middle of some of the best school districts in the state, in the country. Yes, I fully understand that we are not the same as our neighbors and frankly, I think that makes us stronger. Yet year after year, we continue to spin in a self-fulfilling prophecy where people raise again and again the lower performing test scores of our students against those of our neighbors. And yet, at the same time, they fail to acknowledge our per pupil investments. I share with you the percentage of municipal operating budget dollars spent on education in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. To our west, Darien, seventy percent. To our north, New Canaan, sixty-one percent. Wilton, sixty-six percent. To our east, Westport, sixty-two percent. Fairfield, fifty-nine percent. Here in Norwalk, fifty-two percent. How may I ask you, can you ever expect for our kids to compete with our neighbors' kids when it comes to test scores and eventually when they're out in the real world if we're not investing in them at the same rate? Yes, I understand economics and yes, I do understand that we're an economically diverse city, but the increase in our public schools has asked for and that I have voted in favor of is tantamount to an average of an additional eight to twenty dollars a month increase per household per year should a tax increase be needed to support it. I may be mistaken, but I somehow doubt that those kinds of numbers will drive citizens out of our town. But yes, let's pretend that N P S wasn't flat funded two years ago in the middle of the most devastating global pandemic this world has ever seen, while our neighbors were increasing their school budgets. Let's pretend we haven't all seen the crisis level mental health survey data that came back last fall. Let's ignore the fact that we know, we know that our students are struggling to regain their footing within their academic grade levels and yes, with their all-important test scores. Common Council members, Mayor Rilling, elected officials, I remain skeptical but hopeful. Please vote your conscience tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian. Christian the Abel.
Kristen.
Christian. Okay, next, next one is Jessica Jones. Is that Christian? Where is Christian? No, oh, Christian. Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Wait a minute, everybody. I'm gonna speak on behalf of my wife. She was next to me, but she have some issues had to go away. So my name is Christian De Abreu. I live in Howard Avenue in Norwalk for seven years. Is I tried to speak on behalf of my wife. She write this and I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait for you there. So Norwalk Common Councilors, what are we planning to do? Got the budget or let it grow? We, the children, the students, need our education in order to be citizens and contribute to the nation. We don't know, we don't want. We don't know, we don't want to see weakening our schools. We want to have options to build a footprint on them. Education is the future. It's the engine of progress. Investing is wise and not excessive spending. So politicians, think before you act. Remember that we are the seat of our future that you have to take care of. Do not deprive our children of education. Let the potential in them growing and together as a society, we move towards a fuller, a precious life. It's in our, it's in your hands to paint a smile of hope to our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jessica Jones.
Well, this is terrifying. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Jessica Jones. I live on Newtown Avenue. I am a born and raised Norwalker. Went through till about first grade, I think it was first grade and second, my mother put me into private school. And that should have been a little telltale sign for me when it was time for me to put my children into school. But I gave Norwalk the benefit of the doubt. I'm nervous for our kids. They've gone through a heck of a time in the last three years. And by not fully funding the budget, you are going to remove all these wonderful things that have been put in place to help them because you're not going to be able to afford to pay for these parents, these support staff, these counselors, social workers. And that's what these kids need. They're going to learn how to add and multiply, divide, read and write a- at any age. But you only have a certain amount of time to teach them how to regulate their emotions. The mental health issue is beyond epidemic at this point, not just for children, but for everyone. And not everyone has the resources or not every even city has the available staff or doctors, psychologists, psychiatrists to even get into if somebody were to have the finances. So as somebody said, I think last week, sometime it's privilege. A lot of us have that privilege. A whole heck of a lot of us do not. And they count, just like food, a lot of these kids count on school being a safe, mentally healthy, physically healthy place. And by removing these services now, it's just going to be detrimental to them in the future, in the long run. So please, you know, just like all of these parents here, you represent, sorry, you represent all of Norwalk. These parents here in this room, we represent all of the parents of Norwalk. There's a lot online. There's a lot of people here, you know, here or in the city that have kind of given up because they know no matter what they do, whatever they come here and say, if they email, you guys have already made up your minds. But I'm asking you really make up your mind. Like everybody said, vote your conscience tonight because it's going to have a huge impact on our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manzi, we will now go to the people that are attendees online.
If anyone is online or remotely accessing the meeting and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now and I will unmute you and promote you to a panelist. So you can speak. Iliana Zuniga, uh, please unmute yourself. You have to accept my invitation to be promoted to a panelist then unmute yourself, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your service. My name is Iliana Zuniga. I live in eight Running Brook Lane and I've been a Norwalk resident for the last eleven years. Again, thank you for your service. Having to do this three times is not ideal. And I can only imagine how tired you all are of doing this again. I am tired. I'm tired of having to journal this course, educate and rally parents to bring awareness of the importance of being involved in these processes. Tired of asking for accessibility services to make it easier for people to attend, speak up and be heard. Tired of asking. No wonder there are so few people attending the meeting in person. People are feeling defeated and tired too. Particularly having to do this for a third time, talk about inefficiencies. I won't make any more statements on the data. We already know, you know it too. My ask is that you find a way to provide as much budget as possible to meet the needs of our children's education. My sons only have a few years left in the Norwalks public system. One, one year, the other three. This fight is not for them, but for all of those that don't dare to speak or have become cynical to think it matters. A lot of you have small children sitting in there that will be hurt by this budget cuts in the long term. Don't shortchange your own children. Once again, I'll ask you all to remember why you ran for this seat to begin with, to remember the ideals you held high and the things you wanted to change when you were running. Vote with those ideals. I know this is a big ask, but I trust you will find a way to do right by our children and the future of our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adriana Romano.
Hello, everyone. My name is Adriana Romero and I reside at two Pettum Road. Um, I just wanted to make it brief. I have heard a couple of the community members already say that this might, you already probably already made up your mind, but as in football or any other sport, I'm doing this as a last hail Mary. Um, I know it's very difficult in the position that you are all in. And I first wanted to start off by saying thank you. I can't be there in person today because of health reasons. But based on the background, I see that a lot of the council members are actually present there today. So thank you for that. Um, I just pretty much want to say that as you are tallying up your numbers, as I said last time, and you're either tallying it up to decrease, to decrease or increase, remember that those numbers are our children. Are we going to increase on the services to provide them wellness, math, reading, uh, safe haven sports? Or are we going to decrease them in reading and math and safe haven? Whatever you decide, you do not have an easy task. I understand that. So again, I'm just taking this as a last hail Mary. I know that you can either, you're in the position to either make a system or break the system and it is not easy. And it's a hard task. So as you tally up your numbers, remember that you are tallying up our children, their future, their vision, their mental health, their wellness, their emotional, along with everything else. And this is my last hail Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Lemieux.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me?
Can.
Oh, great. Uh, hi, Sarah Lemieux. Uh, I think this is my twelfth year in Norwalk and a former Board of Education member. And I, so that I would have something different to talk about in this public comment, decided to talk about economics. So and I wrote out my remarks so that I wouldn't fumble over my words. Um, economics is not a hard science like chemistry. It's a social science. And a lot of economics has to do with the behavior of people. Numbers are numbers, but economics as a discipline is a practice that is subjective and philosophical and one in which people frame and present numbers to serve their pre-existing priorities. It's naive to act otherwise. My takeaway from listening to the conversation about the budget in this and in previous cycles is that there are two competing economic views at play here in Norwalk. One view seems to be a scarcity mindset rooted in the idea of crisis, reactive rather than proactive and anxiety driven. The other, and I think at this point I have listened to almost as many hours of the public comment as you have about this issue in this budget cycle. Uh, and what I have heard overwhelmingly is that most Norwalkers share this view with me is a proactive, community investment minded and future focused view. Most of the commenters I've heard are asking you to preserve the value that we have created by investing in our school system over the past ten years. We understand that to do so will create more opportunities for families to move here, for children to grow, more opportunities to create wealth in our community, for our property values to continue increasing, for our city to be vibrant and robust and a great place to live. We understand that not to make this investment and preserve this value will provoke the very crises that others express wishing to avoid. I ask that you consider this perspective as you vote to set the cap. And I don't imagine that you will feel that fully funding the BOE's request is a doable thing. But I just would ask that you do the best that you can to inspire us with your choices. And I'm going to end with a quote from a very prominent economist, Lawrence W. Reed, who's the president emeritus of the Foundation for Economic Education. An economy produces no wealth on its own. Only real individual people produce wealth. If they didn't, there would be no economy to talk about. They do it through the acts of working, risking, investing, inventing, innovating, employing, building and serving. So if we want a wealthier society, it follows that we must encourage people to risk, to invest, to invent, to innovate, to employ, to build and to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Dino. And after Melissa will be Rich Bonifant.
Sorry, I had to accept the invitation. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Dino. I live at twenty two Norwood Road. Once again, as a parent of children in Norwalk Public Schools, I'm asking to, I'm advocating for fully funding the Norwalk Public Schools budget. My family has lived in Norwalk since two thousand thirteen and our son Jackson graduated from Bryant McMahon High School in twenty twenty. It's a very challenging year. Ironically, he spoke in front of the common council and Mayor Willing in two thousand eighteen over similar school budget concerns. The stakes then were important, but in our post COVID world, the needs of students are even more critical. Earlier this month, the city recommended the Norwalk Board of Education receive a four percent increase to its operating budget, far below the twelve point seven percent requested by the BOE. It has been said that the recommended increase won't even allow us to address our simplest obligation to pay the salaries and benefits of our staff. How is it possible, possible that the city has recommended an increase that won't even fund contractual obligations? Where are the remaining funds supposed to come from? The recommendation also completely ignores the need stated over again to address the expiration of S R funds and the ever increasing cost of specialized education. When the city flat funded the district in two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one, it forced the Board of Education to fund existing social workers and counselors with a one-time federal grant dollars at a cost of six point six million or a three percent increase at the time. Mr. Mayor and common council members, I don't envy your decision and I know it's challenging financial times. But can you in good conscience not support the continued funding of resources that support the high need students we have as well as those needing more mental health interventions? In my role as a producer making content for children and families impacted by different challenges, I'm immersed in recent research on how severely children's mental health has been impacted. There truly is a crisis and numerous recent articles reports on the testimony of professionals in our district validate this. I teared up hearing the testimony of the teen from Norwalk High who shared her own experience um, in the first budget meeting and I can corroborate that what I have heard from families locally is kids need additional support more than ever. As we know, surrounding districts fund their school districts much more robustly, such as Wilton at sixty six percent of their operating budget and Darien at seventy percent. We know our district has many, many more challenges than our affluent neighbors. So why wouldn't the city recognize the greater need? If there ever was a reason or year to dip into the rainy day fund, this would be it. It's continually frustrating that we find ourselves in the same divisive budget process every year, as well as the lack of transparency every year. Why wasn't the grand list information available when it was supposed to be, since it's pertinent to this conversation? Every year we hear it's impossible to fund our schools, yet we end with millions of unspent revenue in the rainy day fund. My son has been successful in college and will graduate next year. He was supported with rigorous classes, some of which were almost cut in that year's budget season when he spoke to you. My daughter at CGS recently returned from a life-changing study tour to Japan. Please do not underfund a budget that would have ramifications for all of our students of all backgrounds, all with different challenges. I hope the voice of that teen from Norwalk High School resonates the most with all of you and informs your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Rich Bonifant.
Hello?
Hello, Richard. We hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you could hear me. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Rich Bonifant, Seventeenth Park Hill Avenue. Um, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Ask you to keep the taxes down. Um, and please don't chase people out of town. My wife and I have looked into like what you can get for a senior tax break and the answer is there's, there is no senior tax break. If you ever worked in your life and are collecting some kind of pension and any kind of social security, you're not qualified for your tax break here in Norwalks. Fixed income. Uh, I'm hearing people pay with numbers about how many percent of the budget is spent from different towns and all that, but I'm will know that they're not apples and apples because the ball fields and the playgrounds come under the parks and the debt service on the renovations to all the buildings that we've done. Um, that's not included and books and computers are not counted in the operating budget because previous boards of education be trusted to buy the books and computers when you gave them the money. So not sure that all these comparisons are totally accurate. So anyway, please consider the people who are paying the bills when you make your budget cap. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant.
Julie Fleming.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Julie Fleming. I live at one Arrow Headquarters. Um, I've been a resident of Norwalk for about ten years and I am a parent of a first grader in the Norwalk Public Schools. Um, and probably doesn't need to be said, but I'm also a taxpayer. Um, I'm speaking tonight. I'm speaking tonight to advocate for the full funding of the Board of Education's request, not 4%, not 6%, not the rate of inflation, but the full amount. Because so far, no one has convinced me that this is more than our children need or deserve. Instead, the arguments against fully funding the request are centered around what we can afford. This is a fair question. However, another fair question is what our children, including our most vulnerable, can afford to lose starting in September. Can we afford to lose our counselors and social workers, our reading and math specialists? Are these really wants? As adults, we can think about school funding as a long-term problem that can be solved over multiple years, but children do not exist in long-term planning cycles. Every year that we do not adequately fund the schools is a year that is lost for children sitting in classrooms while we deliberate. COVID made this extremely clear. So what do we lose when we kick the funding can down the road and promise to fix it later? What can we afford? I'm personally skeptical of solutions that focus on later because later has a way of never arriving in the city. We do need a long-term plan. Our funding needs are growing as we service an increasing concentration of high need students and our grand list is not. You are not our state representatives, but you have a voice in representing our city and we need you to use your voices to advocate for more state funding for our schools. Hartford wants workforce housing from us. We control local zoning and development decisions and we should demand fair school funding from the state in return. Until we get fair funding from the state, providing our students what they need and deserve is our problem to own and the clock is ticking. Our students can't wait five years for us to make the school budget whole. And that is why I'm asking again for this council to fully fund the Norwalk Public Schools request. Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now. I know we have two people that were added to the list.
Why don't we call it Mr. John Levin first, and then we'll go back to those visiting on Zoom.
Hi, I wasn't gonna, oh, my name is John Levin. I live at 249 Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk. I wasn't going to speak, so I don't have any prepared anything. And there's been a lot said. And I was thinking, and I've attended some of these meetings before and was surprised up until now, there seemed to be very little commentary from the taxpayers, who of course are the ones that are responsible for paying the bills. But a couple of our last speakers did identify themselves as taxpayers. And it was my hope and desire that I would come and speak tonight as a taxpayer, as a Norwalk taxpayer. My wife and I moved here 32 years ago. We bought a home and we've lived here and we love it. And we're property taxpayers. Some years the tax, property tax doesn't go up, other years it does. I know this is an election year and often election representatives up for election seek to avoid raising taxes. But you know what? I will just say that as a taxpayer, one of many, it's, it's my job to pay these bills. This is, you know, I'm, I'm where the money comes from. Some can afford it more than others, but quite frankly, I just want to say that it is the job of the taxpayers to pay for city government and for city schools, and that is our responsibility. And do we like higher taxes? No. Taxes suck, but it's the bill and that's what we got to pay. And quite frankly, if you need to raise taxes, even in an election year to get the schools properly funded and the needs that the city met. Hey, that's, that's our job. We're supposed to be paying this bill. You know, it's like you go to a restaurant with a family and you know, there's an adult at the end of the table. They gets the bill at the end of the night and you think like, oh darn, this was expensive. Okay, it was expensive. We will pay it. I understand there are some property owners that will suffer if there's a that will suffer with rising taxes, but my guess is they're probably, sadly, they're probably suffering already. But you know, again, I just want to say it's the job of the taxpayers. Is it fair that Norwalk taxpayers be burdened in ways that the surrounding town taxpayers are not with high needs students and other challenges in our school system? No, it's not fair. It's not fair. But again, it doesn't change anything. It is our job. This is our bill. We pay our bill. Don't be afraid to give us the bill and tell us what it costs and raise taxes even in an election year. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaylen.
Jaylen.
Hi, everybody. I've been watching on Zoom. Oh, sorry. My name is Jaylen C. 24 Woodbury. I was just watching on Zoom. I was actually driving around in the car. I was going to talk on Zoom, but I felt like I needed to come here. One, as a elected official as well, and also the appointed, the chair of Fair Housing. But also more importantly, the father too. Anybody who knows me knows that my boys are my world. And if you ask me what they deserve, I would say a 50% increase to it. However, when I look at my friends and growing up in Norwalk for 30 years, more of my friends left Norwalk because they couldn't afford to live here. And when they left, they didn't have the choice to pick a town that had a great school system. They're more pushed to a city who has struggling school systems up the line and cities that I won't mention to disparage them. We all know those cities that my friends had to go to. And Norwalk is a city that yes, is the fastest growing city in the city on the move. But it's also, and we talk about it during election cycle, diversity is our greatest strength. And I just can't, even though I know that the school systems need money and my son is going to enter kindergarten next year. And I know what they need and I wish that we can do it. However, there are a lot of people who just can't afford to pay more. The rents are already high, taxes are already high, and they just can't. And in good conscience, like I said, I want to give my son and the kids everything they can, but I want you guys to think about that. This tax bill that if we fund the whole 12, it's going to hurt a lot of the people that we fight to live here and that diversity that we cherish so much and that makes Norwalk so great is something that we hold on tight to. So I really want to thank all you guys for what you're doing. Thank everybody on the BOE. I know that it's not hard. It's not easy. But just think about those people who don't have the choice of where they move to if they can't afford to live for anymore. And they're going to go to a school system that's not as great as the Norwalk Public Schools. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Manzi, is there anybody else on virtual?
Yes.
Julie Mendez.
Hello?
Yes.
We can.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Common Council members. My name is Julie Mendez and I reside in Norwalk on Wolf Pit Avenue for 15 years. And I apologize, I am unable to come in person today. I am a mother of children at Norwalk Public Schools, Wolf Pit and Nathan Hale. I am also a certified teacher and have a degree also in psychology. And currently I'm a substitute teacher and volunteer at Norwalk Public Schools. Please, please, please think about our children. Please make the right choice, the right choice for our children, for Norwalk Public Schools and for our future. As a mother, I want the very best for my own children. As a teacher and educator, I want the very best for each and every child in the Norwalk Public Schools and you should too. I am speaking to advocate and please fund the Board of Education request. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Erica DePalma. Erica, if you can unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay. Sorry about that. I push you to panelist. I've come before the council before, Erica DePalma, 110 Perry Avenue, and I am a BOE member representing District D. I've come in person, but unfortunately my babysitter dropped tonight, so I'm here virtually this evening. And it sounds like I'm one of the last panelists, so I will leave you with a comment that I have found to represent some of the most impactful moments for me as a Board of Ed member. I spoke last week about the number of crisis calls that I'm privy to on a weekly basis in this role. And it's truly been an emotional experience for me to be on the other side of those calls and emails and hear about children that are in lockdown. I think it was probably, you know, the best representation of it was when a SWAT team entered Norwalk High December of 2021. And we heard from parents and students the traumatic impact police going into their schools and guns raised had on our babies. And what I heard from politicians at that time was that we were going to get behind the root causes of bullying and suicidal thoughts and anxiety and the emotional stress that causes children to lash out in these ways. I heard from council members looking to rally in partnership with the Board of Education on efforts to curb bullying. And then I heard from the Norwalk Partnership, April of the following year, that our suicide rates, while they were decreasing, they were still very significant. So I'll leave you tonight as one of your last speakers and just ask you to remember that these are not numbers. These are our babies and they are in crisis and you guys saw firsthand the posts and the images that were out on social media following a SWAT team entering Norwalk High. We're very lucky that nothing terribly traumatic came out of that in terms of injuries and deaths. And we're very lucky that Norwalk High hasn't been, you know, or anybody in Norwalk hasn't been victim of a suicide at this age. But our surrounding towns have. These are not numbers. These are babies. Thank you.
Thank you.
April W.
Good evening. My name is April Wenderstrom. I reside on Oxy Oak Lane. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for your service and consideration tonight. I was at last week's meeting as well. Didn't really plan on speaking, but tonight I prepared some words. Oscar Wilde once said that a fool is someone who knows the price of everything and the value of nothing. I recognize this quote and I'm intimately familiar with the ways I'm penny wise and pound foolish in my own work as I work for a national nonprofit and ask myself this question every day when exploring vendors and the many ways I could be saving money for the organization who employs me. Though I don't wish to insult and call members of this council fools, I will implore the council to remember those words and ask what value do our schools, our teachers, our educators and our students provide our community? And how do you consider that investment in your own legacy as council members whose responsibility it is to fund the initiatives needed to support our most vulnerable community members? And then I ask, what is the cost to our community if we don't properly fund what's needed by the BOE for our children? As I watch from home, every individual on the screen and on that dais with the council, I recognize you are most present and intend on listening to all the speaker's words. And so I thank you. I'm very appreciative of your time tonight. Thanks again. But I implore you to reconsider the ask of the BOE and vote your conscience tonight. I'm advocating that you fund the ask of the BOE and invest in the value of our community, our schools, our teachers, our educators and our students, and provide that value to our great city. Thank you for your consideration. Good night.
Thank you.
Kristi Robinson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kristi Robinson. Hello, Common Council and Mayor Rilling. I'm speaking on behalf of a previous, I was a previous employee of Norwalk Public Schools, proud. And I just wanted to say that I am very forever grateful for all the training that I've received from you guys. It has led me to my own professional growth, but as I'm watching from a distance at another district, I am heartbroken. My daughter is also in the public school system and is receiving counseling at the elementary level. I, I'm hurt. I am. I just. I'm praying that you guys make the right decision in the benefit of building the whole child. What I mean is literacy, math and that heart, mind, body and heart. I have grown to really embrace emotional intelligence and using that to get in a way that we can communicate. And I'm hoping that we don't take away these resources. Our children need it. They've been making strides and having to manage the stress of school, the stress of life and just meeting those needs with those social interactions within themselves and between others. So I'm begging you to make the best decision on behalf of the children, of their whole child, their whole growth and making sure that we have those that can serve us. Again, thank you for everything that I've served in the district for 11 years. And I'm just praying and hoping that I could, you guys make the right decision on behalf of all of our children and those that we, the resources that we need to make that happen. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dr. Robin Gredinger.
Hi, guys. I've come to speak to you before, so thank you so much for your time, your dedication. I've been listening to the meetings and I know all the late nights that you've put in. I've come to speak to you before. I'm, I have been a school social worker at Norwalk Public Schools for the last 16 years as well as living in Norwalk for the last 16 years. I live at 501 Foxborough Drive. Today, I really just kind of want to focus on safety and what taking away the budget will do to the safety of our children. When we look at what we're looking at taking away, I'm looking at how this will be taking away safety for our students. When we look at taking away social workers and counselors, overall, we're looking at, looking at taking away some of the main people who are looking at chronic absenteeism, which is still a big problem in Norwalk as we come back from COVID. We are the ones who are in the front lines. We are the ones who are making home business. We are the ones who are talking to parents and getting those kids who are still suffering from high anxiety back into school is some of our main priorities. And we're still struggling to do this. Taking away funding for that right now would be a major, major deficit for our children. So I look at that as a huge safety issue for our kids. In addition to taking away sports, sports and more and more research is coming out that physical activity is one of the main things that we can do to actually alleviate depression and anxiety. And if we're looking at taking away sports in the middle and high school level, we are literally looking at stripping coping skills away from our students. And that is really scary for me because it is something that is built in naturally for our kids. And we are now looking at taking that away from them and that's habits that we are trying to instill in them for patterns that they will develop for the rest of their lives. When we talk about building a child, we aren't, we're looking at building them, you know, mind, whole body and soul. And when we talk about taking the sports aspect away, it's also about taking away that team aspect. And looking at when we work in, in, in units, we work as a team. And so that's one of the first ways they learn how to do that. And by taking that away from them, we're taking that experience away. More people who are also looking at being taken away if this budget isn't fully funded is paraeducators. Paraeducators are really assigned for children based really mainly on safety. So we, if we're taking this away, more classrooms are going to be cleared. People who are medically fragile are going to be taken to have paraeducators taken away. So again, I'm asking you to really look at these positions. Just in a side note as well, I do want to say in the last two weeks, I have had eight students who are all general education students come to me who are all self-harming. So I do just want you to know that this is real. This is post-COVID. So I do just want you to know that this is real, this is post COVID, and this is what we are dealing with. None of these students are identified, none of these students have been, you know, spoken to about this before. So please, I beg of you to continue to think about our student's safety. When you look at these numbers, I know they're very difficult, but that's what I'm asking for, for you guys. Thank you for your time, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically now.
She's a council member. She'll have an opportunity to speak when we go into, when we finish public participation. Anyone else? I know there may be somebody else in the audience who wishes to speak. If so, come down and sign. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, well, thank you. We'll close public participation now. And move forward to the agenda. The item on the agenda is Finance and Claims Committee, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor Rilling. I'd like to read the following resolution and under the Finance and Claims Committee, which reads as follows. Whereas Section 1-289 of the NORC Charter requires that a majority of the common council vote to establish a specific spending limit on locally expenditures during the process of establishing the next fiscal year's operating budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Norwalk that the maximum limit on the total appropriation for the City of Norwalk for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023 shall be no more than $402,559,982. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of $424,361,207 less estimated intergovernmental grants of $21,801,225. Be further resolved that the result of this vote and resolution, together with the attached 2023-2024 budget book, be forwarded by the clerk of the City of Norwalk to the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Mr. Burnett has moved that item for discussion?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. I would like to first and foremost thank my colleagues on the common council for their hard work of researching the budget items, asking insightful questions and offering creative solutions during this difficult budget cycle. Your commitment is greatly appreciated. We have faced several challenges during this cycle with our primary focus of keeping taxes as low as possible for NORC residents and ensuring the services we provide are continued without interruption. This is achieved with communication, collaboration, and a willingness to partner, to identify solutions. It is extremely difficult to achieve a level of balance when we are faced with a budget request increase in a single budget cycle of $27 million from the Board of Education. Suggestions of phasing in increases of funding over several budget cycles have gained minimal to no momentum. However, we have to remain committed to partnering to create innovative solutions now that do not place a tremendous tax burden on NORC residents. As we move the operating budget cap to the Board of，请 excuse me, to the Board of Estimate and Taxation, the BET, for further deliberations, this council remains open to working with the Board of Education to ensure students continue to receive the best possible first-class education and experience. We have our financial, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Henry Dakowitz, who will provide a review of the current budget scenario related to the operating budget cap resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. If I could share my screen. Can you all see that?
Not yet. Now we can.
Great. So I've been circulating this spreadsheet for about a week now. Let me just explain how it works for those who may not have seen it before. Column B, the baseline, is the mayor recommended operating budget that was presented a month ago. This total city and public school spending was $424 million. Minus the intergovernmental revenues were 21.8 million. And as Mr. Burnett just read the resolution, that difference is called the operating budget cap, $402.6 million. And that's what you are charged with voting on tonight. There are some check marks in our calculation, the gross tax levy and the net tax levy. The net tax levy is the amount of money we must raise from local taxes in order to balance our budget. What I have done here on this spreadsheet is summarize many different iterations of our basic calculation model. Citywide, this proposal would have a mill rate of 25.501. And those are the changes in mils and percent from last, from the current year fiscal year 23. The citywide average tax bill would be $7,027, up 225 or 3.3%. I then did the calculations, district by district, the same calculations. And that is considered our baseline of what the proposal is in the discussion. On, I then created over the last, I would say, two weeks, different variations based on requests by council members. Column C, it's a higher cap. I call it version 23A, this one's version 23, is what if we spent $1 million more? So what would happen is the total city spending would go up by $1 million. The operating budget cap would go up by $1 million. And the net tax levy that we have to raise goes up by $1 million. And then I calculated the same mill rates and average tax bills for the city entirely and for each of the six districts. Column D, which has a lower cap called 23B, is what if there were an additional $1 million of revenues going the other way? So the total city and spending would be the same 424 minus the 21 million intergovernmental revenues. So the budget cap would be the same 402, but the net tax levy of what we need to raise goes down by a million because we have the additional revenue. And then I calculated citywide and district-wide mill rates and average tax bills. I was then asked to look at what is the scenario if the entire request from the Board of Ed was funded? So here we would have 12.69%, the same 0.75% for the city. The revenues are 443. The budget cap is 421 million. And that's an increase of about 19 million. And the net tax levy is 403 million. And that's an increase of about 20 million. Just to give you a sense of the differences, citywide, the mill rate would go from 25.501 to 25.434. And the average tax bill would go from $7,027 down to 7,008. It's the wrong column, excuse me. The, the mill rate would go from 25.501 to 26.77. And the average tax bill goes from 7,027 to 7,378. The difference from that baseline would be 1.276 mils or 5%, $351 or 5%. We then looked at two lower caps. What if we cut $2 million of spending or $3 million of spending? And again, the numbers are just calculated by the models. So up at the top, total spending would go down 422 or 421. The, the budget cap goes to 400.6 or 399.6 million. The net tax levy goes down to 381.8 or 380.8. And as you can see, the mill rate goes down and the average tax bill goes down. 6990 or 6971. I was then asked to calculate some other scenarios.
I think, I think at this point, Henry, we should allow if there's additional question or dialogue from the council before you go into all of the, the additional scenarios.
Of course, whatever you wish. And if you want me to not share my screen, just let me know.
Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. Either in person or via Zoom or send comments in. I know I speak for everyone here and I really appreciate and we value those comments. I want to thank the mayor and his staff for putting together a budget. I know it's not easy. We say every year it's difficult for whatever reason or lots of reasons. This is one of the more difficult budgets we put together. I'm going to propose a motion tonight to amend the resolution we just read. I'm going to read the relevant part of that motion, which, the amendment, which is the maximum limit on total appropriations for the City of Norwalk fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 shall be no more than $399,559,982. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of $421,021,361,207 less estimated intergovernmental grants of $21,801,225. As anybody listening may have noticed, this is $3 million less than the proposed amount in the cap. And I want to comment and give some reasons for that, why I'm proposing this. As was aptly put earlier, we represent all the citizens of Norwalk, not just the parents, not just any one group. I know we all here would love to give everybody as much as good, 12%, 15%, 50% of the noted, but we can't. And, and so this $3 million is less than three quarters of 1% of budget of $420 million. I think that money can be found by the BET. But I'm making this amendment for two principal reasons. First, I'm really concerned, I mentioned this last week, about next year and future years. This budget includes several one-time sources of revenues, including $5.3 million from employee health insurance co-pay, at least four to five million from the OPEB trust fund, which alone, when we go back next year, will result in higher tax rates in five of the six districts. Not to mention the additional $2 million from the rainy day fund. These are dollars that are going to have to be made up next year and in the future. Plus whatever increase we give to the BOE because of the minimum budget requirement. There is no such thing as a one-time increase of the BOE budget. Whatever we give one year, we have to give the next year and future years. And every additional dollar we add will have to be made up from somewhere. I mean, maybe we find other sources, but if not, it has to come through the obvious sources of higher taxes or reduced revenue, reduced services. And it's also important to remember that we are in a revaluation year. The average sale prices for single-family homes and condominiums in the city increased 36.1% from 2018, the date of the year of the last revale, to 2022 right now. Ideally, these lower mill rates will compensate for the higher value, lower mill rates will compensate for these higher values, but that is not always the case. My other reason for proposing this amendment is that I believe, and I think others do as well, that the tax increase is simply too high. In the sixth taxing district, which I represent, along with Ms. Shanahan, it results in a approximately $1,000 increase, and that's the median increase. That means more than half the residents will be paying more than that. That is a lot of money for anyone. And contrary to what some in the community may think, not everyone in Rhode Island can afford this type of increase. We know that's not the case. Many are seniors or residents who have lived there all their lives and are now being priced out. I personally heard today from a friend, a senior, said it nicely, that she is looking to sell her house because of the taxes. We don't want that. But it's not just the sixth taxing district we have to think about. We are pricing people of all backgrounds out of the city. As Ms. Nagelski Iker pointed out last week, half of our households in the city are already struggling to meet their necessary living expenses. And if you look at this current, most recent census data, I think you can further break down on some of the key elements there. 15.5% of our residents, more than 14,000 people, are 65 years old or older. 6.3% of our residents, more than 5,700 people, under the age of 65 have disability. 16% of our residents, almost 15,000, do not have health insurance. 9.7% of our residents, almost 9,000, are at or below the federal poverty level. Ms. Revolus has consistently reminded us of the effect increases taxes have on all our citizens. That even the smallest increase in rent can make a difference in getting a child a meal. We are also in a period of high inflation and as we all know, we're facing increased expenses. We all know about Eversource and other utility expenses going up. We're all experiencing higher grocery prices and gas prices and everything we do. It's, it's, it's out there, it's a hot, we're all dealing with it. So I guess in conclusion, while some tax increases are, while tax increases are inevitable and necessary, it is incumbent upon us to do everything we can to minimize the effect of these taxes on our residents while providing the necessary services. My proposed amendment, while not lowering the proposed increase as much as I might ideally like, seeks to balance those interests. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to speak in support of Mr. Livingston's amendment. As he spoke about our district tax bill under the mayor's budget will go up 5.63% in a remedian increase of $1,000 per household. Adding this increase to last year's tax increase, our district tax bill will increase almost 10% over the past two years. We also know that in these inflationary times, next year we will likely have another increase. We know that also this bill this year is slightly understated due to several one-time credits that Mr. Livingston described that won't be applied to next year. And so as I said, there'll be definite for, for at least a 4% increase. As you know, tax increases compound and this compounding effect on our district will result in our taxes increasing as much as between 12 and 15% over a three-year tax season. This is just not sustainable. I want to reassure the parents and the children who came out tonight. We've been listening to you, we really do care about the school system and providing the best schooling for our children that we can afford. This is my fourth budget season. And I need to refute the notion that our budget does not properly prioritize the children or their education. 60% of our budget is allocated to the Board of Ed or expenses that the city pays on behalf of the Board of Ed. And school-aged children, as Mr. Livingston was pointing out, make up about 12% of our population. In addition, we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars on new and renovated schools. This is clearly the behavior of a mayor and a council who prioritizes education. Every year we're told that if we don't fully fund the Board of Ed to ask, the teachers will be laid off and our favorite arts and sports program will be canceled. Every year we try to work with our Board of Education colleagues to better understand their budget, but we're often left with more questions and then we have answers after these discussions. What we do see after year after year is that the teachers' jobs by and large have been safe. And that funds are found for the arts and sports programming that we care about. Not only that, there's always a few million unspent dollars that the Board of Ed asks to roll over for the next year. As we understand it, there's currently 70 positions open at the school district, making it unlikely that jobs should need to be cut. As we understand it, there's currently seventy positions open at the school district, making it unlikely that jobs should need to be cut this year if we don't grant the full twelve point seven ask. I applaud the mayor's efforts and his own staff to take a sharp pencil to their budgets. And while it's good to make sure there's no waste, we also see that, as councilpeople, the effects of not being able to undertake important work that the city needs because of our severe budget constraints. Across this city, people want more sidewalks to increase walking safety, more public works projects to mitigate the effects of flooding from the monster storms we've been getting, and more services for the elderly and under-resourced communities. I wish we had more funds that we could grant to the city for all its residents' needs as well, but we do have limitations. We must consider our taxpayers and how we spend our hard-earned tax dollars. We must work at least as hard as they do to find savings and economies and to provide the best possible services for what our taxpayers can afford. As Jalen said, we don't want to be pushing out the very people that we're trying to serve in this city.
Thank you. Further comment on the on the amended resolution? Hi, Mr. Meek.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, I I would just like clarification that uh Mr. Livingston's amendment was aligned with uh Mr. Dashwiss's uh column H of the the options presented.
Column H. I I don't have the columns in front of me, but I did get those numbers from Mr. Dashway.
Yes.
Yes.
It's column H.
Yeah.
It's H.
Is it H?
Yes.
Yes, right.
Twenty-three J?
Three million dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's twenty-three F.
Twenty-three F, sorry. Twenty-three F.
Thank you.
But column H.
On the Excel. Yeah.
Anything further, Mr. Meek?
No, thank you.
Any other uh questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Revolus.
Um, I just wanted to express um support of what Tom, uh, Mr., our Councilman Tom Livingston said. Also do appreciate his acknowledgement of understanding how um our constant conversations of our um hopes and not suffocating the parents that and the families that belong to the same children we're trying to address and take care of. Um, I don't know if you can hear, but I have a little one in the background. I have one that's graduated, but I still come from a um a space and place where we all now can see how um uh increases of um potential sizes right now could be harmed, not anybody over any array, whether you're um considered District E, District B, District A, District C. Um, we need to have a space and place where our constituents are secure in their um homes and their taxes and in the uh pay they're incre- they're receiving, which was also expressed. Our taxes cannot increase in the manner that is disproportionate to the income that our families are bringing in. And we also have to understand that there are people here that are in love with their community, but don't only, don't have children in the school system, but need their supports, their own supports, such as our elderly, such as um children or people or family or adults of disabilities, so on and so forth. So I just wanted to give a quick support to um what Tom is um Tom's modification, Mr. Councilwoman Livingston's modifications.
Thank you. I hear some background noise someplace.
It's.
Okay. Any further comment or discussion on the resolution amended? Seeing none, all in favor of Mr. Livingston's amended resolution? I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, by saying no.
Yeah.
Yes, right. So when your name is called, either yes or no?
Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Camacho?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Ms. Najelski Eichner?
No.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Uwleman?
No.
Ms. Revolus?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
No.
Mr. Kites?
No.
Ms. McMur?
No.
Ms. Alterman?
No.
Mr. Meek?
Yes.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Eleven nays and four yeses.
The uh amended resolution did not pass. Uh, that brings us back to the original resolution as read by Mr. Burnett. Do we have any further discussion? Ms. Ayers?
Mr. I think.
Yeah, Ms. Alterman?
She can go first. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to recommend a resolution to the amendment that reads as follows. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Nawa that the maximum limit of the total appropriation for the city of Nawa for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty-three shall be no more than four hundred and four hundred and five million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. This appropriation cap represents the total expenditures of four hundred and twenty-seven million, three hundred and three hundred and sixty-one, two hundred and seven dollars less estimated intergovernmental grants of twenty-one million, eight hundred and one, two, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Be it further resolved that the results of this vote and resolution, together with the attached twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four budget book forwarded by the clerk of the city of Nawa to the Board of Estimant Taxation. Can I speak to my motion?
Yes, your man.
Um, as a parent, as a taxpayer, as a person who knows the fiscal constraints of our city and who takes budget season extremely serious, um, I have to act that we do better, that we invest more. Even though I am not in support of the BOE's request of the twelve percent, I know that the four percent just will not do. And because of that, there's tons of things I could say. But because I know that the investment that we need to make needs to be greater than what was recommended by the mayor, and I I deeply respect um Mr. Livingston and Ms. Shanahan and all of those and and Diana and Mr. Meeks, who are really just trying to do their best. I know that if we come together a little bit more, that we can invest this additional money. It may not be everything, but it would at least allow us to have a level footing and be prepared to deal with other budget concerns more creatively. So that is why I am submitting this resolution.
Further discussion? Mrs. Najelski Eichner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I am speaking in support of Ms. Ayers' resolution. Um, while I too cannot uh support the twelve percent budget increase, given the tax burden that I think it imposes, and I spoke at great length um last week and will not reiterate myself about the um, I think, really important uh limitations on our taxing system that really constrain us to do anything that is fair uh for our very diverse city and our very diverse residents. Um, but I also spoke last week about the need for balance, and I do think that four percent uh is lower than would be ideal for our schools. I think that the concerns we've heard from parents um and educators are very real. And I, we need to um try to find a point where we can support and sustain um those core services. Um, I will say that um, you know, having spent an enormous amount of time looking at the Board of Education budget, raising in um a lot of questions to the Board of Education and to the schools, um, I do continue to have concerns um about uh the transparency um of how some of the ESAR funds were used and how it has been conveyed to the parents. Um, I think that there is reassurance due to the parents um that uh the um twelve percent included an enormous number of new positions, um, new positions that were added after the efficiency study. And so I think that parents deserve reassurance from the Board of Education that um when we uh reach a budget level that is less than twelve percent, that that does not mean that we are returning to levels of service that are below what we had in the pandemic. Um, and they're not even necessarily going to be below what we had in the first year of the pandemic. So I think that there uh is important conversation to be had, you know, in reassuring that we are deeply invested in our schools. We have increased uh funding uh for the majority of the last few years, and we are providing tremendous services to our students who are thriving and achieving. Um, and I think that the um important message that I do want to convey to our students is that you are valued and we are investing in you, and we deeply believe in you, we deeply believe in what you are achieving, we believe in our teachers and what they are achieving. Um, were I sitting in the Board of Ed's seat and had any authority around budgets, I certainly would be looking at some of the increases um that have been made in administrative and non-classroom positions over the last two years in particular. Uh, but those are not our decisions to make. Um, so our decision is to try to find a balance point that respects uh the needs to keep our city diverse, which means continuing to respect um our residents for whom these budget increases represent enormous burdens on top of burdens that already exist, while at the same time really supporting our schools to continue to achieve the tremendous and amazing things that they have achieved uh for our citizens, uh for our taxpayers, for our residents, um for our students. Um, so I will be supporting Ms. Ayers' increase. I think that the three million um would go a long way towards um covering some of the inflationary costs. Um, but also tries our best to protect our taxpayers from undue hikes. And thank you, Ms. Ayers, for making your amendment.
Further discussion? Ms. McMur?
Thank you. Um, I want to um support Ms. Ayers' resolution and reiterate what my two colleagues have said before me. Um, this has been a really tough budget cycle. I don't think anybody would disagree about that. Um, I've only been here for two budget cycles, but I've asked a lot of my colleagues um if they've ever seen a tougher one, and I think everybody would agree that we haven't. Um, I mentioned this during our last meeting, but it feels, I bear repeating this. Um, we arguably have more education advocates on this council than in the past. Um, we have parents of young children on this council who are invested in our youth and the schools in this community. That is something we should celebrate. We should work together and not against one another. With that said, do we need to do better in partnership and collaboration? One thousand percent, yes. But that requires everyone coming together. Every day I get up to do this job and remind myself of my why. Why did I run for this position and why do I do this work? I ran for this seat primarily because of education, and I wanted to bridge the gap between the BOE and the council and help fix our broken budget cycle we experience year after year. I wanted to fight for not only my kids, but all of the kids of this town. Knowing what I know now, I don't think that's impossible, but it is a lot harder of a task than I could have ever imagined. Government is slow and it takes time, which is unbelievably frustrating for moms who just want to get things done. And yes, money can help in a lot of ways, but more money does not necessarily equal better schools. For me, to create amazing schools, you have to have happy teachers who love what they do, are respected, and we need to create a nurturing and academic-rich environment. As we have heard from so many of you via email and here in person, there are hundreds of success stories thanks to our teachers, counselors, and those that directly service our students. I want to thank them directly. I see you and I respect you and appreciate everything you do every single day. On the city side, I'm frustrated that the BET did not increase the budget for the schools two years ago. As I've said before, I would like to see us come up with a strategy to make up for that three per three, three point three percent increase. However, I also want to point out again that the city told the schools to not spend the ESAR funds on long-term employees, something they did not abide by. Both of these choices have put us in the situation we are in today. One of the biggest things that I've spoken about and that has shaken me during this process is we have asked questions publicly via email and conversations, and yes, we do get replies to those emails, but they are not direct answers to our questions. We often talk about the schools, but we don't often talk about investment in our town. In addition to the continued investment in our schools, I personally would love to see us get a community center, have better and more playing fields for our children, better security around IT, and more SRO officers, to name a few items. These all come with a price tag and not small ones. And I want to point out, none of them are in the operating or capital budgets this year. We all want great schools, but if our town is crumbling around them, aren't we selling our kids short just in a different way? We are tasked as a council to make this monumental decision, yet I feel when we ask questions, we are given more confusion than direct answers. I find this to be the most frustrating part of this process because you, rightfully so, expect us to have the answers, and oftentimes, we don't. One thing I do feel like we have good answer for, a good answer for is the mental health supports. Although this is not part of the school's operating budget, we are working creatively to come up with ways to support our students in need. This should not fall on the shoulders of the schools alone. This requires partnership and us working together. These are not only students, they are children of our city. I want you to know we heard you. In closing, I do not want us to be reactive as a city. We need to be proactive and come up with a plan that we can work together on and agree on to make our city the best place it can be. I propose, moving forward, that we have more meetings in person together as a full BOE and full council, but that requires everyone coming to the table and being as transparent as possible, giving us their priority list, what is not on the priority list, and talking about what is realistic on both sides. Thank you for your resolution, and thank you to the mayor and the rest of the council and all of the city staff for all of the work you have put into this. I really appreciate it.
Further discussion, Ms. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Ayers, thank you for your resolution. Uh, Ms. McMur, thank you for your very um honest and heartfelt words. Um, Ms. Najelski Eichner, also for yours. Um, this has been an extremely difficult and emotional budget cycle. Um, I think that that was very clear. I don't think I need to reiterate some of the things that I said last week. Um, I have really been back and forth all day about this resolution. Um, even tonight, listening to um the different, you know, the different perspectives. Um, I've lived in this city for twenty-four years. My kids went to schools here. All of my kids graduated from our schools. I taught in our schools for twelve years. I know uh Mr. Palmer talked about the uh SWAT team in Norwalk High. I was there. My kid was there. So I know what our kids are going through, I do. And and COVID has taken a real toll, and I said this last week. We need, as a city, to wrap our arms around our kids. And the partnership that Ms. Ayers and Ms. McMur have talked about, I have spoken to the mayor about. Um, I do believe that we will come up with creative solutions to uh to fund the mental health needs of our kids. And maybe it won't be through the this budget, maybe it won't through the be through this cap process, but I do believe that we will get there on that. Um, I was waiting for Mr. Dakowitz's email today. It came at two seventeen. And I literally went in and I looked at, okay, about five point three percent. I I did the math. I asked, what is that going to mean for me? Okay, so for me, the four point five percent is about twenty-one dollars a month. The four, five point three percent is about thirty dollars. I can absorb that. My family can handle that. But, you know, I think about your op-ed, Ms. Young, and the words of Jalen C. tonight. That's, that's really powerful to me because, you know, I I'm, you know, I don't have a fancy house. I don't live in a fancy neighborhood. I have a, you know, a nice house in a nice neighborhood, right? So so my thirty dollars is maybe fifty dollars for another family. It might be twenty dollars for another family, but that adds up to people. So so, you know, I really hear that. Um, but in the end, I think I I am going to come down in support of this amendment. Um, I know our our teachers need the support, our kids need the support, so I'm going to to vote in favor of this amendment.
Any further discussion?
We'll take a roll call though. On the amendment by Ms. Sims.
Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Camacho?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Ms. Majewski-Eichner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Yugulman?
Nay.
Ms. Revellus?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Mr. Kites?
No.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Alderman?
Yes.
Mr. Me?
No.
Mr. Livingston?
No.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
We have five nae, five nae, five
Five yes.
And ten nays.
The amendment to the resolution did not pass, which brings us back to the original proposed resolution. Do we have further discussion? Mr. Meek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm voting against this overall budget. No offense to anyone who's worked really hard on it. I know you have. I reject this notion that our, our children are worse off than kids in Turkey, Afghanistan, and the Ukraine. They're very resilient. If we give them the credit for it, if we treat them like victims, they will act like victims. And we need a paradigm mind shift in how we're treating our children. They are going to survive. Will Norwalk survive with tax increases in perpetuity? I don't know. You know, I hear, I hear casual mention of twenty dollars a month. Well, you know, twenty dollars a month at an historical inflation cost is a six thousand dollar hit immediately. And that gets compounded year after year after year. It's not sustainable, as others have mentioned. And we need to tighten the bell. And I'll get off my soapbox now, but thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone who works very hard on this. And I just want to say how, I mean, we've all been talking about how tough this is, and it's tough because setting the operating budget cap is it's one of the most significant things that this council that we do. It's one of our most important obligations. Norwalk's operating budget is both a summary of our priorities, but it's combined with a solemn recognition of what we can afford. And I, I can only speak for myself, but I know I'm not the only one who feels a tremendous responsibility to strike this most complicated balance between funding critical resources and doing so in a way that is as equitable, fair, and affordable as possible. The budget by design is supposed to be a collaborative process. Those of us sitting here know that voters elected us to make tough decisions and expect city departments to work together to achieve the most effective budget possible. But with that in mind, I am deeply alarmed that the superintendent and her team did not engage in meaningful, good-faith negotiations with the city after requesting a twelve, twelve, twenty-seven million dollar or twelve point six nine percent increase. Put simply, the city's taxpayers cannot afford tax increases between eight point four and eleven point six percent. The decision by the superintendent not to come to the negotiating table, a change in behavior from prior budget cycles, and repeated assertion and advocacy of such a substantial budget increase, especially in light of the decision to use S R limited, limited grant funds for long-term positions, is not only ineffective, but it's also a disservice to the students and everyone involved in the process. Each budget cycle lasts a year, but the decisions we make are generational in effect. The law prevents us from reducing a board of education's budget, so every increase passed becomes permanent. The motion that's on the floor, the mayor's recommended budget, includes an eight million dollars, seven hundred, eight million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollar increase or a four percent increase to the Norwalk Public Schools budget. And within kind expenses, making the Norwalk Public Schools sixty percent of Norwalk's overall budget. I, I want to repeat that because I do think it bears repeating, sixty percent. Again, I said that budgeting is a statement of our priorities, and it's undeniable that education and the Norwalk Public Schools is this city's top financial priority. And this council deeply supports the Norwalk Public School system and its students and its family. The numbers prove it. I also would add, as my colleagues have mentioned tonight, that that, that number alone is not the full extent of our commitment to Norwalk's children. And I believe, as mentioned by my colleagues, that it is imperative that we come up with creative ways to make sure that we, we use funding to address the severe mental health needs, as exemplified by the survey data presented by the Norwalk Partnership recently. I also, as a personal note, as a, as the only millennial on this council, I think it's necessary to consider the long view. In several key respects, we are already in a tenuous position as Connecticut has a state median tax rate that's among the highest in the country. And Norwalk is in the most expensive area in Connecticut. As one of the only renters on this council, it is worth noting that Norwalk has had one of the largest rent increases in the United States. And as Nora pointed out last week, half of our households are already struggling to meet their necessary living expenses. As you heard from Jalen C. during public comments, higher taxes can lead to pushing out younger people and younger families who are so important and crucial to Norwalk's present and future. We are all committed toward a common cause, to make this city the best it can be. And I think that what's been so tough in this process is to do it with full knowledge that we are constrained. We've received hundreds of emails from taxpayers across the city, running a spectrum of trying to advocate as much as they can for the kids, but also a lot of people who live on fixed incomes who are in tough situations. We have to be cognizant of both. I believe that the mayor's recommended budget of a four percent increase in the Norwalk Public School system and a point seven five percent increase to the city make, is, is an efficient, prudent, and, 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 and beneficial budget to try and make Norwalk move forward in the way as best as possible. This has been an excruciatingly tough deci- tough decision. But I am so deeply proud to have colleagues who are as deeply committed to the city as anyone has ever seen, and the staff who have were tirelessly to help us make this incredibly tough decision. So I thank you all and you know, I, I I know that we will take this decision with the best of intentions in our hearts.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Huberman?
May I ask President Burnett to reread the resolution? Sorry. To reread?
Reread the resolution, please.
We've thrown a lot of numbers around.
Absolutely. So the the current resolution that is on the floor now reads as follows. Whereas section dash one, two, eight, nine of the Norwalk Charter requires that a majority of the count, common council will to establish a specific spending limit on locally expenditures during the process of establishing the next fiscal year's operating budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council in the city of Norwalk that the maximum limit on the total appropriation for the city of Norwalk for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three shall be no more than four hundred and two million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of four hundred and twenty-four million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars less estimated into governmental grants of twenty-one million, eight hundred and one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Be it further resolved, that the result of this vote and resolution, together with the attached twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four budget book, be forwarded by the clerk of the city of Norwalk to the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Mr. Burnett, there's a word missing, I think, from the resolution. I wasn't the one that, that was gave me my names. More funded local, locally funded expenditures.
That, that is so the, in the first paragraph, in the first sentence was, it says establish a specific spending limit of locally funded expenditures. So add the word funded. Thank you.
Mr. Huberman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, President Burnett, for rereading it. This is, this has been a, a struggle for me on a lot of levels. I'm tired. I'll be honest with you. It's the fourth budget cycle that I've been through. And we've sat in this chamber and spoken about the kids and the needs and what is what we can do to best serve them. We've spoken about the city and the needs and what we can do to best serve the city as well. And it it's a struggle for me. I have a child in the district. I have a child who is special needs. And one of the things that has been hard for me during this entire budget cycle as a parent were the emails that I received from N P S on a regular basis that, in my opinion, vilified our special needs kids, scared parents into thinking that everything would fall apart if twenty-seven million dollars was not given to the schools. That's what the twelve point six point eight percent is. Twenty-seven million dollars. That is a very, very large ask. That is a record ask. It's the largest ask since I've moved here that I've seen the Board of Ed request from the city. Since we moved here in two thousand and eight, we've seen record increases to our schools by the council. We saw a year where the claim of flat funding, but we also had a long discussions about being careful about how that would be dealt with, how that money would be used. And I, I just, I feel troubled. And I feel a certain disingenuousness that has gone on in this particular cycle that has bothered me greatly. I couldn't support the three million dollar decrease. I couldn't support the three million dollar increase. And I'm sitting here right now questioning whether I can support the increase the way it is. Because of the rhetoric that has been spewed forth through this entire process for both sides. And it's troubling to me. It's troubling to me as a city. It's troubling to me as a parent of a child in the school system. It's troubling to me that I have been told that we, we have, we were requested to come together to talk about these things, yet we never got information that we asked for when we came together to talk about these things with our colleagues on the other side. It's troubling. That's troubling to me. And that's something we all, as a city, need to correct. It was said tonight on numerous occasions, you as elected officials, and it was said by people who were also elected officials. There's culpability on both sides. Let's all own that. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Alderman?
Thank you. Um, I, I just want to speak to a councilperson. Huberman just said the two meetings that I was present for started with the city making a thirty to forty-five minute presentation to the Board of Ed members, and they were given between twelve and fifteen minutes to speak. So I don't know what questions didn't get answered in meeting because he said meetings. So I'm just wondering if somebody can give like a hard example.
Are you asking me that question, Heidi?
Sure, I just mean to anybody. I, yeah.
The last meeting that I saw was a presentation, a very lengthy presentation, I thought, by the Board of Ed, but maybe I wasn't, I didn't come into the meeting at the beginning. I also sat through a joint meeting where we spent the entire time looking at the facilities. We didn't talk about the budget. We talked about a facility report for almost an hour and a half. Never spoke about the budget, never spoke about what, what the, the budget cycle would look like. That was one of the meetings that I recall. I'd have to go back and look through my notes, Heidi, to give you more specifics.
I'll jump in and give an example.
Thank you.
Um, so my most recent question was about a line item, and I have the page numbers here if anybody wants to reference them because I know there's been a lot in social media of this. Page forty-two, forty-four, and forty-five of the Board of Ed budget. My two questions around this were, there's a line that says fringe benefit, which is under employee benefits. I wanted to know what was included in fringe benefits, not employee benefits, but fringe benefits specifically. And why did it go up millions of dollars in the elementary, middle school, and high school, which is referenced in those page numbers from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, before the S R dollars ran out? Mr. Asmani did provide a video yesterday that I thought was very informative, but again, did not answer those two questions. So that's an example of just the last week.
Thank you both. I just want to point out, and I'm sorry if somebody else was still waiting. As council, we only did two meetings joint with the Board of Education. Are you referencing watching a Board of Education meeting? Or are you referencing the joint council and Board of Education meetings?
I'm referencing an email that I sent to Mr. Asmani.
But it's been mentioned that like in meetings, we've asked questions. So I'm just trying to get what meeting did we hold where they didn't answer our questions?
The first joint finance committee meeting that we held, I did ask a question and I was told that I would get answers back. I followed up via email and I did not get answers to that. I believe it was in reference to central office or administration staffing, and then we have also asked for a breakdown of the F T Es that have been hired over the past three years.
I asked two questions in one meeting that I then had to, I believe it was a month and a half later, follow up with an email to which I was directed to the original PowerPoint presentation, which didn't answer the actual question that I had asked. I'd have to go back and look at what those questions were from my emails. But I believe that it was, it was directed to the PowerPoint, which didn't actually answer.
I'll also add that a question that I did get an answer to revealed that the numbers that the Board of Education and the superintendent had provided to us were inaccurate. So the Board of Education in the present, and the superintendent in the presentation that was made to us stated that the thirty-five counselors and twenty-two social workers had been moved from the local budget to the S R budget. Nowhere in that presentation did it reveal that the school had hired an additional, at least ten social workers and counselors. So what the school did was they attributed those ten new positions to the local budget and put the existing positions on the S R budget. The term that was used for that was sleight of hand, although there are less kind words that you could use for that. So in fact, yes, there have been serious concerns raised about the accuracy of the information that has been provided to the council about the school budget. When we have gotten answers, those answers have not necessarily reassured us.
I see Mr. Meek's hand up.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I guess in, a little bit of response to Councilman Huberman. You know, this, us versus them, or sides versus sides. First, I thought you were talking about my minority party, but
Never, Brian.
Okay, um, you know, I, I don't disagree with you, but I'm going to take a different tact. You know, page ten of our budget book highlights that the school boards getting four percent and the cities getting zero point seven five percent. And that's disingenuous, frankly. There are eleven light items in the city department that are getting over four percent, five of which are getting over ten percent. So to your point about, you know, this side versus that side, us versus them, you know, let's not throw stones in glass houses. We have a lot of departments that are going up You know, let's not throw stones in glass houses. We have a lot of departments that are going up even more than education. And we should just stop all of it, like you said. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms., Ms. Ayers and then Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
I appreciate my colleague's words and, and people seeking clarity. Um, but I said last week that I come to this table and I do the work. And we need to really examine ourselves when we are, as Mr. Meeks says, throwing glass, throwing rocks and glass housing. We have had extensive conversation. I'm still having extensive conversation because I came to this table wanting to understand the budget, not the Board of Ed budget and the city budget. I wanted to understand the entire budget, the deficiencies of the entire budget, so that we could come and make a decision that was best for everybody, knowing that we cannot make everybody happy. And personally, that was not my goal. I was not trying to make everybody happy, but I was trying to do my best. Even with the resolution that I proposed and, and it was not voted up, I'm okay with that. Because when I leave this room, I did my best. And anyone who elects us, that's what they're asking us to do, is our best to show up, to participate, to ask questions. It's not this, and I've heard this rhetoric, we step in line. Anybody knows me, I don't step in line. I was a hard-headed child and I'm a hard-headed adult. My mind works and it functions at a hundred percent. And when I come and when I work, I do it with a clean heart and I do it genuinely. And I, I believe most of my colleagues do the same. We really want to become strategic and allowing ourselves to grow as a city, but also answer the needs of all of our residents to the best of our ability. But the best of our ability means that some people are not going to get what they want right now. And instead of us going back and forth, back and forth, why aren't we talking about how we can make ends meet? Where we can find money to bring resources? I got all this pushback from my op-ed, but I believe it wholeheartedly that partnership will help us, not that it is the solution, but it will help us get to a better place than where we are today. And so again, I, I, I think, I think we're serving nobody going back and forth and who didn't come to them, who didn't hear this, that, that time has come and gone. It has come and gone. If it was so important, you should have been at the meeting. You should have said something at the meeting. You can't come sixty days later and go and point a finger, because as my grandmother used to say, when you're pointing, how many fingers are pointing back at you? That's it, Mr. Meeks.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner?
I'll defer to Ms. Ayers. I'm, I have been duly schooled. Moving on.
Uh, Ms. Revolus first?
Um, I just wanted to state that I'm in agreement with, um, Mr. Meeks and, um, Councilwoman Ayers and other members that bring testimony to the fact that this is on a both-sided um, situation. It's not only when I, when we speak or when I speak, I know I can speak directly about a um, giving accountability to both sides to make it more efficient for residents to live here. Um, I mean that on both sides. Um, I went lower because I actually wrapped this so lower and get better ways of spending, re- reevaluating our efficiencies and how we're spending and looking at innovative ways to find monies to spend, like grants. Um, that being said, I also feel that, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I can't say I'm at a hundred percent agreement of the four percent. I just don't want it to go higher than that because the realities are, um, we have people who on both sides of the coin will be affected, whether it be, you know, we want great schooling for our children. We all want that. We, you know, you guys, um, not you guys, but our constituents and the people who so, uh, beautifully spoke, um, you get to look at a committee that has children. Right alongside with you, you know what I mean? So, um, I just wanted to speak that, like, I do appreciate the understanding and the conversation that we are looking at the some both, um, sides of the coin. I also want to say, uh, to, I know that to, uh, my colleague, uh, Hope, uh, Heidi Altman, um, I understand the, you know, the questions she's looking for specifically, but I just also want to say the dynamic overall and the inabilities to have clarification on one verse, one side of the offer is prob- is just prin- is just a part of, um, where we say there's, there's problems in our process and how, um, transparent we are not only to each other, but to, you know, the, for example, I was once a parent that they moved so passionately to speak about, you know, funding our children fully and, you know, getting our heartstrings pulled, but then came to the seat and realized how, how daunting that conversation is and how sometimes questions don't get answered, but just like Ms. Alt-, um, Ms. Ayers has shown, there's been frustration on our side to get proper numbers too. There needs to be a conversation of our process, a conversation on how we, um, put our taxpayers, you know, how we can make them in a better situation and put them in a better place um, to be a community that can afford what we're asking. I will be a hundred percent. I know I've heard that no one speaks about our, um, you know, our, our housing around us or our community, but I want to be open to say, sorry, I have a baby, um, open to say, I've been very, very open in talking about the fact that we need ownership here. We need ways of developing, um, which you have, may, I'm not going to say hasn't, but supporting, uh, local businesses and so on. So we have a more, uh, strengthened, um, community and particularly where we talk about innovation and leadership and, um, and strengthening that. We have a beautiful quote that was said by, uh, one of our constituents. We have to put our, we have to put our community in the position to do that. And we have to do that with intentionality and not just like catchphrases like that happened. So it's a both-sided entity. I just wanted to clarify that I, I do, I did go behind, um, uh, Mr. Livingston's, um, modification because I just don't want to see it go any higher than the four point oh. So, um, the four percent, I'm sorry. That's all I wanted to express. Um, and I thank you for your time. I thank you for all those that came out and spoke, but we are very, we care a lot for our children. We care about the social and emotional, um, aspect for our kids. There's part of that that's also a, um, a place and space that just happens right in the home too. That is our strength as parents to truly really see the best foot forward for our children. But we also have to remember that we can't strangle you around that child. The to be honest for our future, to be honest for our longevity and, uh, generationality for Norwalk. We have to be honest about what we're spending, how we're spending. And I do agree that as a, a rainy fund is exactly what was said. It's a security. It's an insurance uh, plan for something that is of emergency, normal operational cost, caps, um, budgets, those are not spaces and places where we should be looking at our, um, our, uh, emergency rain rainy day fund. Uh, that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to think, think for clarifying that it's on a both sides that we're hopefully all looking at this.
Thank you, Ms. Alterman?
Thank you. Sorry, um, let me lower my hand. I just want to say all the emailing, then perhaps we should do this in public meetings. It sounds like there are a lot of questions that didn't get answered. Um, I don't know why you wouldn't want that on the record in your defense. If you're, if everyone is saying the Board of Ed has left them with a lot of questions unanswered, I do think the public deserves to see that on the record. Um, that's all I'm gonna say tonight. I appreciate, I know everybody here is tired and people are frustrated. I want the public to have the same information we have because that is our responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one? Yeah, I just want to say one thing to respond to that. And I actually, again, want to thank you and sitting there. Some people who may have saw, and I, I appreciate even those who said, you know, write op-eds or who wrote in. I'm gonna stay for myself. There's a reason why I directly didn't do this. Um, I have other ways of how I wrote this part and show a response, but I didn't also, there's some times where this back and forth does make us look like we're doing exactly that, fighting amongst each other, doing a back and forth amongst each other. And the majority of us are supposedly on the same party. So it doesn't always look the best, even though we're trying to, especially as the council, show our, our, um, viewpoints because we don't get to do that often. The council of a whole, uh, overall represents the families here and the individuals here that live here. That's our job. We need to make sure that you guys all can rest well and easy um, at the end of the day. Um, so that being said, uh, I just wanted to give that in a response where yes, we do it and that these are public forums and spaces that it could be um, addressed in a manner that our community sees our questions or our conversations or what we're concerned with. But sometimes I think it's not the fact that we're not listening, we're not reading, we're not observing, and we're not questioning. It's just that, um, the look that some of this can give sometimes can actually minimize the reason why we have our seats and chairs. It's not about a back and forth. It's about that looks like we're bickering and fighting. It's about a conversation to get forms of action. I hope to find actually some principles within our community that we all, no matter what we are, sit to and that way that whether if this dollar doesn't go to that principle, we're not, we're not for it overall across the board. So, um, that's why I just want to get to, you're right, that this should be in a space and place that everyone could um, read it, see it, and hear it. Um, but there's a reason why sometimes, um, certain conversations just seem tip for tat in a sense, um, and a bit petty, um, and doesn't make us look to the best accord. So I know for that in particular reason directly, I don't respond unless it needs to be responded to. Not that, let me rephrase that. They need to be responded to. I respond when you guys can press play back to my response. So, um, I just wanted, at least for myself and for any of those who think that in your, um, reaching out that maybe it's not being seen, it's being seen, it's being heard, it's being read. It's just, I think that for some of us, these are a more notable place and space to have the conversations that you guys can come back to and hear what we do or don't know.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will keep this brief because I know it's late. Um, I just think that, and I want to respond to what Ms. Altersman said very briefly because I think it kind of misses the point, which is it's not about how many meetings you have. The idea, the meeting itself is not a, the transparency that you seek. The transparency as you see or that we see frankly, is not only answers to our questions, but a fuller understanding of Board of Education, uh, you know, NPS expenditures, what worked with Dennis, just as, um, Councilmember Young raised in her, uh, opinion piece earlier today. The fundamental problem is that we have had a struggle finding an effective partner in the superintendent and her team. And more important, that we have found that there has not been in this year, unlike frankly prior years, a, 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 a good faith negotiation where, you know, the parties could come together and, and have an honest discussion about where cuts can be made to try and make as reasonable and increase, you know, as possible. Um, so to say that it's whether it, questions are answered is kind of half of the point. The, the fuller point is that there is an honest and forthright discussion between both NPS and, and the city and the council. And that's just didn't really happen this time, and I hope that we can all resolve to do better in future years.
Agreed.
Further discussion? Ms. Young?
I, 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 you see how I raised my hand? I don't know if I should speak right now. Um, I know we're all tired. You know, and, and, and one of the things that I really want to say, it's really not about the person. It's about our process. I saw you learn. Thank you. Th- this is about a process that has not. And all of us struggle to figure out how do we change this dynamic? That does not work. I, 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 I have been particularly frustrated and exhausted by all of this. And, you know, I signed up because I wanted to make a difference. And I think that's why we're all here and that's why we're, why we have Board of Education members. That's why we have common council members. That's why we have committee members because we want to make an impact. And so for anybody to think that any differently about that, that's disingenuous. Do we get it right all the time? Absolutely not. But it's about the process and being transparent. And I, and I will say that everybody here is committed to what this job calls for us to do. And this budget cycle is the one thing that drives us a little crazy every year. It has to change. I mean, we, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat what my colleagues have been saying over the past couple of months, but we all have to acknowledge that there must be a change and we need to have some concrete conversations on what that change looks like. It might be very minimal. It, it, it could probably be, just be a small thing. Let's really share the information that we all need to make informed and educated decisions. We really sit here with our hands tied. And, and I've been, I think this is my third cycle and nothing's changed. What's changed right now are the faces. And that's what will continue to happen as long as we keep with this back and forth. I can't, we'll have another superintendent come in with a whole new group of employees and we'll be dealing with the same thing over and over again. And so I think it's about us really trying to find concrete ways of changing this dynamic because it just doesn't work. We care about children. We care about our city and we want the best on both sides of this issue. How do we maintain our city infrastructure? How do we make improvements? How do we grow our grand list? How do we grow our population? And how do we properly educate our children? I've heard people compare us to our surrounding towns. That's unfair. That's unfair. You know, I've heard people say their friends said, well, why are you in Norwalk? Well, you chose to be here. You said because of that, the diversity. But if we keep on this trend, that will be less and less. We will be the town of the very rich and the very poor. And if that's the kind of diversity that we're looking for, then maybe that's, maybe that is it. But we have to do something different. And what that is, I think, might start with a small group of people to talk about. What are those small little things that we can do to change this? Because when Dr. Australia is gone and someone else is in her spot, we'll be in the same position. And so, um, I'm just wanting us to move forward with this in the best way that we can right now. None of us are happy. And so, um, this is where we are right now. This is a reality, but we have to respond to what we know is coming down the pike. Right? We know we need to guard ourselves and guard the interest of this city. And that's what we're trying to do. Um, and that's really all I have to say.
There are no further comments or questions? We'll have a roll call vote on the resolution?
Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Uvelman?
Pass.
Ms. Revolus?
No.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
No.
Ms. Alterman?
I'm gonna pass.
Mr. Meek?
No.
Mr. Livingston?
No.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
Mr. Uvelman?
Mr. Uvleman?
Yes.
Ms. Altman?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven yeses. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight noes, eight nes.
So the motion does not pass. Eight to seven, we do not have a resolution as of this moment.
Now what?
We stay here till we have one.
Anybody want to vote?
So.
Well, right now, we we don't have a resolution, so we have to. Anybody can do anything they want.
So um.
We need to have the figures.
Yeah, I don't have, oh, I've got them.
Well, then you make it. Go ahead.
Can I make a a motion to re-raise um Councilperson Ayers amendment?
To what? I'm sorry.
Can I ma- make a motion to bring Councilperson Ayers amendment back to the floor?
That already failed.
What? Oh, we have another. Yeah, let's just have a recess. Who wants to vote for recess?
Excuse me, before you vote for a recess, Mr. Mayor, before you vote for recess, I would not recommend um uh bringing the emotion, the same emotion that's previously failed back. If somebody wants to make that motion again, they, I think for as a matter of process they can, but I would not recommend bringing uh rehearing the same motion. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, well, we'll take a five-minute recess. Hey, we're back in session at ten sixteen PM. Do I have any comments, questions? Ms. Young?
Um, so based on our 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 conversation before the um break, I'm going to read the following amendment to the budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Norwalk that the maximum limit on the total appropriation for the city of Norwalk for fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty-three shall be no more than four hundred and three million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. This appropriation cap represents total expenditures of four hundred and twenty-five million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars less estimated intergovernmental grants of twenty-one thousand, eight hun-
Twenty-one million.
Twenty-one million, I'm sorry, eight hundred and one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Be it further resolved that the result of this vote and resolution together with the attached twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget book be forwarded to the clerk of the city of Norwalk and board of estimate and taxation.
Ms. Young, move that resolution. Discussion?
I need to point out to my district that our um effective tax rate is now at five point nine five percent. Extremely high.
With the
Almost six percent.
With the new resolution?
With the new resolution. I can't support it.
Further discussion? Well, for a roll call vote?
Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Camacho?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Najelski Eichner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Abstain.
Mr. Uvleman?
No.
Ms. Revolus?
No.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Kites?
Yes.
Ms. McMur?
Yes.
Ms. Altman?
No.
Mr. Meek?
No.
Mr. Livingston?
No.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
Oh, no. Um, Ms. Ayers?
Abstain. Abstain. Okay, that's my vote.
All right, got you. Thank you. One, two, three.
So we have eight yay and six yes. nae and one abstention. So the motion, the resolution passes. There being no more, no further business to come before the council, I'll entertain.
Motion to adjourn?
There we go. I'm sorry?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, okay. Ms. Revolus uh has a motion to adjourn as ten twenty, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, stensions, we are adjourned at ten twenty PM. Thank you.